We are going to go ahead and start. All right. Uh, here we go. Uh, it is my pleasure to call to order, uh, the Abington Township Board of Commissioners, uh, monthly meeting for November 12th, 2020. And can we please start with a roll call?
Commissioners Thompson?
Here.
Brodsky?
Here.
Bo?
Here.
Carswell?
Here.
Rossman?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Sapon?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
De Placido?
Here.
Weinberg?
Here.
Bahe?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Heckler?
Here.
Spiegelman?
Here. Um, before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to ask everyone, um, to remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance for a moment of silence. Um, we are, uh, we're mourning, uh, the passing of a, of a, of a former commissioner and a truly, uh, truly good and decent man. Um, my predecessor as Ward 11 Commissioner, uh, William J. Linnott, Bill Linnott. Um, Bill was Commissioner, uh, from 2004 through 2011. Um, and as folks here who, who watched him or, or had the pleasure of serving with him know, um, his was always a voice of calm and reason and, and wisdom and decency, uh, on the board. He, uh, he, he really brought a great deal. Um, he was a, a professional writer, very talented writer, wonderful way with the spoken and written word. Um, he had been a member of, uh, the, the Board of School Directors. Um, he was the president of, of ATRO, the Township Republican Organization. Um, and he was just a, he was a wonderful man. Um, in, uh, in this later years, uh, Bill and his wife Betty, absolutely delightful person who, who predeceased him by a few years, uh, moved to Riddle Park in Ward 7. Um, but I, I will, I will never forget and I will always be indebted, uh, to Bill for all of, uh, generosity, um, during that, uh, transition period, uh, helping me get ready to start in my time as Commissioner and all of his, uh, words of encouragement. Um, uh, Bill Linnott was a wonderful man, so I, I hope that, uh, we can all, uh, take a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, let's go ahead and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic. Indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you. Um, all right, our, uh, before we, uh, before we begin our formal agenda, um, I do have a, a brief announcement. Um, an executive session was held on November 9th, 2020, uh, for the purpose of discussing potential litigation. Um, all right, now let us, uh, begin, I'm gonna, to jump around with my screen a little bit here. Um, let us begin with, uh, public comment on agenda items. And we have one resident with hand raised, so, uh, if you could please allow that resident in and, uh, and unmute.
Go ahead.
All right. Go ahead, please.
This is Laura Lehman from Meadowbrook and, um, I, I, this, that was disgusting at the last meeting, Mr. Spiegelman. The, the sunshine law does not allow you to cut somebody off without a reasonable opportunity to speak on a 545-page budget. It, it is just inexcusable that you continue to do that. Okay, so, uh, and, and all of the rest of you enable that. So you need to think about what you're doing. This is not in the interest of our township to act in this manner. And if you want to know why it's coming like this from this side, start looking at what's coming from that side. It needs to change and it's not going to change on this side until you do that. Okay, you, you have, first of all, I want to say that new business for the Board of Commissioners, those items should be in their proper thing. So if it's disaster, emergency, that should be under the public safety. I don't know how we started getting, we don't have a separate committee called Board of Commissioners Committee. So, and, and not allowing proper comment at anywhere at, you know, after agenda items, that when you remove the committee meetings, at this meeting, my comments should come after each agenda item where I would have three minutes for each one. And that is how we had it until you started taking away committee meetings and not allowing the replacement of the speaking in between the items. Uh, the consent agenda is also not in the interest of the people of this township and all of you know it and all of you are enabling those things not in resident interests to continue to take place. The, uh, Macy's appealed assessment, um, when you get to that item, I'd like you to give it, uh, a good discussion, please, for residents to hear because the question was asked at the Willow Grove Mall meeting about how the bankruptcy would affect the 365 mall apartments. Uh, and so it seems to be the same company doing the, the, uh, it's Preet that seems to be doing the both of them. And that's a question that I hope you will explore thoroughly for the public to hear because these people are to be in that situation. The other thing is the pension committee, uh, you're going to appoint an investment consultant. And one of my concerns with the budget was how many things are being outsourced because we are, so at first we seem to be taking away, uh, a commit, uh, not committee heads, uh, department heads. And, uh, Mr. Manfredi said we were saving money by doing that. Well, we aren't saving money. As you will see, we are adding new positions. We just added another assistant director of engineering so that the engineering director who took on public works. And so new people are being added and third-party outsourcing like this kind of thing is happening when.
Just so you know, that's been, that has been, uh, three minutes. You can please wrap up in an additional 30 seconds.
Okay, so, um, I, I do want to say again, we absolutely cannot have this kind of, of stuff going on that is against residents' interests. And in the speaking rules, that's the most important place for us to express what we have and also not to allow Mr. Manfredi or, or any of, anyone else to get on, undo what we said and not give us at least one minute back or 30 seconds even back to comment on what they just said. Those are fair speaking rules and we don't seem to have them in Abington. Thank you.
All right, your time is up. Thank you very much for your comments. All right, moving along. Uh, we now have, uh, the consent agenda and for that I turn to Ward 1 Commissioner and Board Vice President Tom Heckler.
Thank you, Presidents Spiegelman. Uh, tonight I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed in the meeting materials, items A through C, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Vice President Heckler.
Thank you, President Spiegelman.
All right, uh, we're going to move on to unfinished business. We have land use committee unfinished business. So we turn to, uh, Ward 6 Commissioner and Land Use Committee Chair, Mike Thompson.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Tonight we only have one agenda item and that is agenda item LU-01-0, or dash 111220, uh, which is to consider a motion authorizing the solicitor to defend the township in the two matters brought by Minal Associates LLC, and I so move.
Second.
Uh, all right, it has been, uh, moved and seconded. Um, uh, Manager Manfredi, is there any, uh, note you want to make? I know we've, we've been over the issue, uh, the issue with Minal Associates, uh, several times in the past. Any comment you would like to make?
No, I thi, I think Solicitor Clark would be best if he would, if he does anything he wanted to add.
Counselor?
Just very briefly, uh, Mr. Spiegelman, uh, in July of this year, the board, um, denied, uh, the land development application, uh, for this property and the owner of the property has filed two separate actions. One, uh, is a fairly standard, uh, land use appeal to the Court of Crown and Please. The other is a complaint in mandamus asking the court, uh, to, uh, force us to issue these, uh, an approval. Uh, the matter has been referred to our insurance counsel, so if they do pick it up, we will, we will stand down. But because of certain time limits, we, we, of having to file, uh, a response, we've, uh, we've needed this action this evening.
Uh, thank you very much Solicitor Clark. Um, before we open it up to Commissioner comments, I just wanted to say, uh, that, uh, uh, Ward 2 Commissioner Brodsky, in whose ward, uh, Bynell Road, uh, uh, is located, um, had to step out of the meeting for just a short bit, but he did want to indicate, uh, that he is in favor of this, uh, motion. Um, that said, any, uh, questions, questions or comments from Commissioner?
Commissioner Spiegelman? Um, just to refresh everyone's recollection and make sure I have this right and for the record, Solicitor Clark, this is the same property. He sat on the rights for three years to develop property. Is that correct?
Correct. They received their approvals back in 2017 and then, um, did nothing for two and a half, three years. Um, and the approvals, uh, it, I wouldn't, I'll, I'll use the phrase expired even though that's not the exact, uh, legal term, but their approvals expired.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you again Solicitor Clark. Uh, Commissioner Thompson?
Uh, Solicitor Clark, just to clarify, they were responsible to file something 90 days after their initial approval and that filing never happened. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. And that 90 days can be extended if all of the information, they did not record their plans within 90 days. And that can be, uh, extended if there are certain extenuating circumstances. And there were, which pushed it out probably to more like 150 or 180 days. But that still, still doesn't explain the, the other two years where they just did nothing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you again Solicitor Clark. Um, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Thompson. We'll be, we'll be seeing you again soon. Um, now we'll, uh, move on to the unfinished business of the Public Safety Committee. Um, we call on Ward 14 Commissioner and Public Safety Chair Lori Schreiber.
Thank you very much. We have one agenda item on our unfinished business, which is PS01100820, which is to consider a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to the Customer Agreement between Census, I think I'm saying that right, Census Gatto, USA Inc. and the Township of Abington, extending the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program Agreement for a five-year term through November 25th, 2025, and I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been, and seconded. Um, any, uh, I mean, again, this is a, this is pretty familiar territory, the red light cameras. Um, uh, any, are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Carries. Wait, I'm sorry, did someone say opposed? Oh, uh, Commissioner De Placido, uh, so Liz, if you could record one opposed. All right, thank you. Motion carries.
And that concludes the unfinished portion of our agenda.
Excellent. Thank you very much Commissioner Schreiber. We'll see you again shortly.
Okay.
Now for, um, for Board of Commissioners new business, uh, we turn again to Ward 1 Commissioner and Board Vice President Tom Heckler.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Uh, we have two items, uh, under this category this evening. The first is BOC-01-111220, and this is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 20-051, ratifying the Declaration of Disaster and State of Emergency from October 22nd, 2020 to October 29th, 2020, and approving the declaration through November 19th, 2020, and I so move.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And our second and final item is BOC-02-111220. And this is a motion to approve the stipulation to settle the matter of Macy's Retail Holdings Incorporated versus the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, should we, uh, start? Manager Manfredi, do you want to, uh, give any background on this or Solicitor Clark?
I will begin it and then Solicitor Clark, Solicitor Clark can take it from there. Uh, as you know, the, uh, school district and the township often have assessment appeals in front of them. This particular assessment appeal has been filed, negotiated and was scheduled for court. And the school district and council have recommended that we settle this in a manner that you reviewed in executive session. Uh, Solicitor Clark, if you have anything?
The, uh, the only thing I would add is that, um, the school district, which has the greatest percentage of the money at risk here and normally takes the lead with respect to, um, tax assessment appeals, uh, in working with their appraiser and, uh, being aware of what the, uh, the market is currently, uh, especially as it relates to, um, retail and retail, as in malls, which are struggling, uh, greatly for the last eight months, has assessed the situation and has determined, uh, that the settlement proposal between the three taxing bodies and Macy's is, is reasonable and it's in the best interest of all three taxing bodies, uh, the school district, the township and the county, and they are, are recommending, uh, they already have approved it and they are, uh, asking us to approve it also.
Thank you very much, Solicitor Clark. Uh, are there any, uh, any questions or comments from commissioners? Oh, Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Um, some, someone had stated earlier that there, there was some connection with this motion and the resident meeting that we had, the public resident meeting that we had, um, with the mall people with, over the apartments. Uh, this of course has nothing to do with that. Macy's is not owned by Preet and I think it's Federation or United Federation.
Federated department stores.
Thank you.
Bloomingdale's as well.
Thank you, but not owned by Preet and I'm sure that Preet just acts, um, as a landlord to the building, to the mall in this, in this and every case.
Yes, that is, uh, that's a very good, uh, very good point, uh, Commissioner Myers. Yes, it's, a lot, a lot of people don't necessarily know this, but whereas Preet owns most of the mall and that, and the, the property around it, um, some big box stores, including Macy's and Macy's and Bloomingdale's owned by Federated, they actually own their boxes outright and that is what we're dealing with. Um, so thank you, thank you very much for that, uh, that important comment. Uh, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes the Board of Commissioners new business for this evening.
Thank you very much, Vice President Heckler. Uh, now we're going to go to the new business of the Public Safety Committee. So once again, uh, we turn to Ward 14 Commissioner and Public Safety Chair Lori Schreiber.
Thank you. Uh, PS01111220 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2178, amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulations, Section 7 Speed Limits Established, Section 14 Stop Intersections, and Article 3 Parking Regulations, Section 25. Parking prohibited at all times, no parking between signs, no parking here to corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing, Section 28 Special Purpose Parking Zones to add speed limit signs on the 400 block of Susquehanna Road at stop intersections on Parkview Avenue at Harding Avenue, Washington Lane at Frog Hollow Road, Pine Avenue at Hamill Avenue and Chestnut Avenue at Roscombe Avenue, add no parking on Arline Avenue North Side, Hamilton Avenue East Side, and Maple Avenue North and South Side. Remove no parking between signs at 282 Tyson Avenue and add handicap parking on Grovania Avenue and Brookdale Avenue, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes our new business for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Now we have new business for the Pension Committee. Uh, so we call on Ward 7 Commissioner and Pension Committee Chair Stuart Weinberg.
Uh, thank you, President Spiegelman. Uh, tonight we have one item, PC-01-0, I'm sorry, 11220, which is consider appointing PFM as the Investment Consultant for the Police Pension Plan, Non-Uniform Pension Plan and Other Post-Employment Benefit Plan, and enter into a five-year agreement subject to the approval of the Township Solicitor and Township Manager, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, uh, Manager Manfredi, do you, uh, do you have any, uh, comments? Do you want to start with any comments on this agenda item?
Very briefly, President Spiegelman, a, as you know, the, uh, five-year agreement with the current investment manager, PFM, Public Financial Management expires, we'll leave it tomorrow, and we began the process, very rigid process, uh, under Act 44 of, of evaluating the portfolios and the various qualifications of investment managers. We advertised, we received eight quotation, or qualification, qualification proposals. We interviewed all eight in, in great detail and asked many questions. And the interview team was a representative of the pension employees, unions and non-unions. I, I have to say that the time spent by Commissioner Weinberg at every step in this process, including sitting in on every interview and, and participating mightily and asking questions, was, was not only insightful, greatly appreciated, but it added great value. And, and of course, it was also myself and, and Finance Director Herman. So after going through everything and looking at evaluations and then, uh, knowing that we were able to, uh, bring a recommendation for Public Financial Management to continue for another five-year period with a 30-day out. And, and I know you, uh, were given a, a brief audit clause, but they are bound to meet their, uh, minimum basis points that they have, uh, agreed to, which incidentally is less than where we were five years ago. So we think, uh, what's in front of you for approval is very solid. Uh, we recommend it. And Commissioner Weinberg, given all your time and effort into this, did not know if you wanted to say anything more.
Uh, thank you, Manager Manfredi. Um, I want to thank you, I want to thank, uh, Finance Director Herman, uh, and Tim Clark for sitting in on these meetings and, uh, I think it was a good discussion that we all had. Um, and I think that this contract, this agreement that we're discussing is really in the best interest of, uh, of the township and the employees. Uh, and again, I've, through this process, I have confidence in PFM, uh, to, to do really the best job, um, really the best job for our employees and the pension plan and OPET. So I wholeheartedly endorse.
Thank you very much, uh, Manager Manfredi and, uh, Commissioner Weinberg. Manager Manfredi beat me to it, but I, I did also want to, uh, express my gratitude at the tremendous amount of, uh, very detail-oriented work that you put into this. Um, kudos, uh, kudos to you. I don't think I've ever done it, honestly. Um, uh, that said, uh, do we have any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Bahe?
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Again, I want to echo, uh, the regard for Christian Weinberg. Uh, he's very diligent and, uh, faithful to his duties for the office. Uh, so thank you for that. I do want to address the comment from the, the public comment period regarding this vote. I believe it was suggested that this was something that we're outsourcing that perhaps we should be doing internally. And I don't mean to be misrepresenting the statement, but that's what I heard. I just want to address, um, with my highest regard and respect for our Finance Director and her staff, uh, I don't believe that trading a stock and hiring investment managers is in the capacity of township staff. This is something that's very suitably done, outsourced, and it's something I think has been outsourced for many years, if not always. So, uh, this is an appropriate, uh, contract and, uh, well bet it. And again, thanks to Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Weinberg for his doggedness in getting this done.
He is dogged. And, uh, thank you very much Commissioner Bahe. That was a, uh, an astute point and, uh, well, well timed. So thank you. Um, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Really, really.
So I, I didn't realize there are 32 members of the Board of Commissioners.
We added a couple of people. We outsourced, we outsourced. We get to call it there from all kinds of.
Is that the music again?
Um, I, I don't know how to make that stop, but, uh, any opposed? The motion carries. Commissioner Weinberg, does that conclude the business?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And that would conclude, uh, the pension agenda for tonight. Thank you.
I, I had to do it because you don't get to go that often, so I.
I know, I just wasn't used to it.
You did a great job. We can't buy a drink though because we can't go anywhere. And now, uh, the new business, now, uh, the Finance Committee. And, uh, so for, uh, for that, we call on Ward 12 Commissioner and Finance Committee Chair Matt Bahe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I'll turn that first to our Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for a report.
Thank you. We're getting an echo.
Well, I guess, I guess that answers that question.
All right, you're ready?
Jay, if you have two devices there, you're gonna have to turn the volume down in one of them. That's probably causing the echo and I see your name twice.
No, I got off the first one. I was on my iPad.
Is there a way to get a written report?
Is that better? Is that better?
Yes.
A little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
I got off my iPad anyway. There you go. Um, the month of the, uh, of October for, uh, collection of real estate taxes, we collected 48,974 as compared to last October of 2019. It's an increase of 18028. Year-to-date, we're at 28,678,904, which is 97%, leaving 801,505, 3% to be collected. I'm confident by the end of December that we'll get back to our normal 98% collected year-to-date, which is, as, as I've mentioned previous years, that, uh, that's pretty much, uh, what has happened all over the Montgomery County. As for the amount of monies of revenues deposited in Republic Bank for October and for year-to-date, we put in 1,659,395 compared to last year of 2,898,78 for the month of October, which is a decrease of 1,231,483, um, for that month compared to the prior year. Year-to-date, we're at a decrease of 1,083,025. That's my report. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Anybody have a question? All right. We'll move to the next item on the Finance Committee agenda, which is FC-02-11120, the motion to approve the September 2020 expenditures, an amount of $4,547,285.94, and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,926,616.66, and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as, pardon me, as they mature through the month of December 2020. And that's a move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, uh, let's have the roll call.
Commissioners Thompson?
Yes.
Brodsky? Bo?
Yes.
Carswell?
Yes.
Rossman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Yes.
Zappone?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
De Placido?
Yes.
Weingrad?
Yes.
Vehi?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Hecker?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Motion carries.
Mr. President, that concludes the Finance Committee agenda for this evening.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Vehi. And that concludes our formal agenda. Now we will go to a public comment. And we have one member of the public with their hand up. So if they could please let them in and unmute them.
Go ahead, Ms. Lehman.
This is Laura Lehman from Meadowbrook. And I want to say that the comment about the Macy's and the Willow Grove Apartments is just completely inappropriate. If Macy's, the anchor store for Preet, is having a problem and therefore reducing their assessment, there is a possibility that that will further destabilize Preet that just actually filed bankruptcy and is reorganizing under Chapter 11. So it is a concern that if you have somebody building a huge apartment building with all of those instabilities, that we could be left with a partially built white elephant or something other could happen. And those kinds of discussions would have served the residents to understand some of those things. The, the other thing I want to say about the apartments is the residents of this township need to understand the fact that the commissioners do not have to entertain this plea to build the apartments, that it's a text amendment, and that you don't have to send it on to the formal process. And the developer was actually very disingenuous in that he had everybody there and he entertained them for the hour and then took a couple of questions and then closed it down. In that manner, we have the developer wanting to move on to the major process when he could have actually answered all the questions that the residents came with. And the residents could decide what they would like you to do to represent them. And I hope that you will not at all send, that first you will educate the residents that come before you when this comes before you, that you don't have to, to take this and that the residents should want it before you take it or they should prove to the residents that it is financially or otherwise viable. Okay, so please do that. The, the zoning at Old York and Susquehanna, they just, the, the Planning Commission just certified properties blighted. And they are not a legislative body. They're an advisory body only. And the two property, two of the properties that were certified blighted did not even so much as get a letter that there was a Planning Commission meeting about their property. All of this is being done behind their backs and completely inappropriate. I want to say that the minutes should not be the official record of these meetings. The minutes do not reflect at all what residents say and only partially reflect even what you yourselves say. The official copy, and I, I plead with you to all put a motion forward together and have some reason that the minutes being the official copy in this township would be an absolute disaster because the, the full record exists and the words make a difference. They matter. And many issues, we've had to go back for years and look at what the intent was or what was said, especially some of the construction issues.
Lehman, that was, that was three minutes and 30 seconds. Thank you. Comments, your time will not be extended.
Will allow me another minute, please, just to.
It will not be extended further. Thank you. All right. And with that, we are going to, we're going to adjourn this meeting and we'll move on in the next couple of minutes to the committee of the whole meeting. I do just want to say that as Vice President Hecker pointed out during the, the budget meeting, and as I think everybody is painfully aware, the, the COVID rates are, are going through the roof everywhere. Even, even here in, in Montgomery County, which has really been ahead of the curve in keeping things under control for, in Pennsylvania, even here in our region, throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the country. So everyone, please, you know, hunker down, stay safe, be well, wash your hands and wear a mask wherever you go. Thanks so much. We are adjourned and we'll be back shortly for the committee of the whole. Thank you all.